Okay. Good evening, folks. It is just after seven o'clock and so we'll get started. Se go ani buju endio wachaya kwekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that as an official call to order, Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum. At this time, I would like to confirm that all members of council are present this evening. Joining us from staff, we have Lanny Hurdle, Chief Administrative Officer, Paige Agnew, Commissioner of Community Services, Neil Carbone, Commissioner Corporate Services, Peter Huganboss, Commissioner Business Environment and Projects, Brad Joyce, Commissioner Transportation and Public Works, Desiree Kennedy, CFO and City Treasurer, John Bolignone, City Clerk, Lisa Capever-Hunt, Director Building and Enforcement, Luke Falwell, Director Engineering, Brandon Forrest, Director Business, Real Estate and Environment, Jenna Morley, Director Legal Services and City Solicitor, Ruth Nordograph, Director Housing and Social Services, Tim Park, Director Planning Services, Karen Santucci, Director Public Works and Solid Waste, Ian Semple, Director of Transportation Services, Mitchell Grange, Policy Manager, Housing and Social Services, Janet James, Deputy City Clerk, Heather Schranich, Manager Housing and Childcare, Jeffrey Walker, Manager Taxation and Revenue, Colin Taylor is providing technology support. We also have Brody Richmond, Manager Environmental Operations, and Derek O'Shea is our meeting host tonight. We also have delegations this evening from Krista Leclair, from Kingston Accommodation Partners, and Megan Naught, from Tourism Kingston, Philip Brown, and Mark Mattson, a delegation from Crystal Wilson, and another one from Richard Hewitt, and our final delegation from Eva Perkey. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We were meeting in committee of the whole closed meeting. We discussed one item with respect to an Ontario land tribunal appeal on Moat Avenue. So I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by Councillor Doherty, seconded by Councillor Hutchison. The council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to approval of the addits. We have two sets of addits tonight that have an additional three delegations, a motion of miscellaneous business, a new motion, and a number of communications. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the two sets of addits? Moved by Councillor Bohm, seconded by Councillor Neil. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move ahead. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have a number of delegations. First up is Krista Leclair, Executive Director of Kingston Accommodation Partners, and Megan Naught, Executive Director of Tourism Kingston, will appear before council to speak to clause two of report number forty-one from the CAO with respect to the Confederation Basin Promenade. Again, just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have up to five minutes to speak, and then we will open it up to questions from members of council. Ms. Leclair and Ms. Naught, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor Patterson and members of council. My name is Megan Naught. I'm joined by my colleague Krista Leclair from Kingston Accommodation Partners, and I'll just ask if we can throw our slides up if possible. Thank you. So we're here tonight to talk about the Confederation Basin Promenade project. Next slide, please.
Thank you so much for having us here today. The IDS was adopted in 2018, 2019 by the City of Kingston, Tourism Kingston and Kingston Accommodation Partners, and it was a five-year master plan to move tourism forward in the City of Kingston, and you've heard of it about the IDS several times here in the council chambers. The IDS sought to balance growth in three key areas: improve seasonality, visitor dispersal, and increase visitor yield. Next slide, please. And one of the key components of the IDS was the walkability for pedestrians. So the waterfront is a unique asset here in Kingston. It's loved by visitors and residents alike. And sometimes we see that it's inaccessible due to the physical barriers along the waterway. The Breakwater Park is a great example of a project that benefits the community and visitors looking to take in and experience the vibrancy that Kingston has to offer. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Krista. The first outcome of the Integrated Destination Strategy, of which there were twenty, identified that the city needed to improve connections to the waterfront and increase access to lands that are not currently accessible to public across the board. Specifically, the IDS supported the development of the Confederation Pier as a solution to the above tactic: wide pathways, seating, shade structures, swim access, proper lighting, as suggested in option three, which you'll discuss later this evening, is what the tourism master plan called for in relation to this development. Next slide, please. The Destination Fund Committee met and discussed the opportunity to support this tactic within the integration Destination Strategy, and with that has pledged $500,000 a year for the next three years to support the commitment of the capital cost of this project that we're speaking in support of this evening. Next slide.
Thank you so much, Mayor Patterson and members of council, for having us here today, and we welcome any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, thank you both very much. So with that, we'll move to our second delegation this evening. We will invite Philip Brown to appear before council to speak to clause two, report number forty-one from the CAO, again with respect to the Confederation Basin Promenade. Mr. Brown, welcome, and you have the floor. I believe you're on mute, Mr. Brown.
How's that test test feel good? Is that better now?
Yes, that's good.
Great. I was just gonna say, wow, it's not often that we get a $1.5 million gift for a project. So thank you, Megan and Krista, and all the partners involved in that gift. Good evening and thanks for having me. What we're looking at tonight in this report is nothing short of an amazing project. The potential of this is going to wow not only our own community, but communities across the planet when it comes to fruition. This has the opportunity to be something really defining for our community, to become iconic on a globally marketed basis. And if you think of some of the great peers around the world that maybe some of you have visited, you'll understand how important and how wonderful they can be. So I want to really commend staff and all the others involved in the work that's come to us so far on this project. It's a tremendous amount of work, and they've done an awesome job to get here tonight. So I'm here to support option four in the report, and I want to encourage council to do the same. This will encourage staff to continue this journey of exploration with the budget they have and are asking for. And I think as time goes on, we're going to see this project unfold as the community becomes aware of it and the broader community becomes aware of it. And I think we'll also see that more and more funding through grants, opportunities, donations, sponsorships will flow, and give staff the opportunity to come back later with an even potentially bigger project. I always like to take and encourage people to take sort of the fifty-year view of any project we do in our community so that we maximize the benefits when we start a project. And so in supporting option four tonight, council can encourage our staff to do that. And I think the most important thing to think about is making this pier as wide as we can now so that we can build on it in the future. And that'll take some planning, some engineering, and some funding. So I encourage you to support option four and help staff and our community create the most vibrant project for the future that we possibly can. And I'm so excited that this is before you tonight, and I look forward to it evolving over time. Thank you.
Wait, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you, Mr. Brown, with respect, could you just clarify what letter you're supporting? You mentioned option four, but is that A, B, or C?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's C.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
I think four is the four million dollar option, I believe.
Oh, fair enough.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to delegation number three. We'll invite Mark Mattson, President of Lake Ontario Waterkeeper Swim Drink Fish, will appear before council to speak to clause two of report number forty-one from the CAO, again with respect to the Confederation Basin Promenade. Mr. Mattson, welcome, and you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity tonight. I'm Mark Mattson, I'm President of Swim Drink Fish. I think I'm following up on others who are here tonight to just really throw their support behind the Confederation Basin Promenade Development Project. We really believe, when I saw it and it was presented to us a couple of months ago, and we participated in the public consultation as well, but we just saw it as just this incredible opportunity just to, you know, continue the great work that the City of Kingston is doing with the waterfront, right up to in front of the city hall there. What an incredible place. We've been working collaboratively with the City of Kingston, I think for almost twenty years since 2001. Some examples of that collaboration certainly was around the Gourd Edgar Downey Pier. We are really eager to try and find other supporters for this project if the City of Kingston goes ahead with it. We have been able to find private funders and family foundation money in the past to help connect people to the Great Lakes. Certainly, Kingston being the freshwater capital of the Great Lakes is really an important part of connecting to the Great Lakes and Lake Ontario. So this is a great place to do it. You had the vision to understand the importance of getting people in and on the water. You know, having swimmable water takes a commitment. You need transparency and monitoring, and the City of Kingston has been able to do that and has created something that people from around the Great Lakes are already envious of. But this project just goes that step farther in some ways, brings more of the creativity and more of what you've learned from the past, and just, you know, changes the relationship, I believe. For many Great Lakes cities, the City of Kingston stands out as one that truly embraces its location and the water's edge. So I just wanted to come here tonight and let you know that we're really supportive of it and excited to help you make it real.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Strab.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mattson, for coming tonight. I'm familiar with your work with the organization. I have a bit of a technical question you may not be able to answer on the spot, but I know that your Swim Drink Fish does water quality testing for especially, you know, if it's safe to go in the water. And that would obviously be needed if we did a swimming platform in this location. I'm wondering if that testing that you do is refined enough to detect things like pollutants from nearby boat motors and things like that, because it's right beside the marina. And I'm wondering if your water testing is sophisticated in that sense.
It's a great question. We have had a water monitoring hub at the Great Lakes Marine Museum. They're temporarily spotted Port Smoke for the last two years, and we were monitoring at Hospital Beach and I think the Port Smoke Beach, two areas that weren't monitored, but we knew, know that Kingstonians go there. So we've been sharing that data, but that's rec water data, and that is bacterial. E. coli, for example. We hope to do that and expand this summer into the area where the new Great Lakes Marine Museum is on 55 Ontario. So we'll be doing some sampling there and sharing that data. In terms of oils, you know, and other types of pollutants, there are of concern, of course, but in terms of rec water sampling, it's not so much of a threat. The real threat is bacteria and E. coli for the recreational water users, particularly swimmers. And we, oh, by the way, just other news is that we're switching from the IDEX machine, which is a twenty-four hour machine for getting results, to a new, we're calling it an innovation lab. It's a new lab that comes from a company in Kingston, Tectra, PDS, I believe, and we're going to be piloting that tool. It was used in the Tokyo Olympics, I believe, and is a really great new source and new way to get rec water data the faster way to the public. So we're excited about that and working with the Kingston Company. So I hope that helps.
That does help, and look forward to seeing the data from that testing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Mattson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll move to our remaining delegations. So we have three motions on the addits. So first, moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor Neil, that the clauses of our procedural bylaw be waived to allow Crystal Wilson to appear before council to speak to information report number three with respect to sleeping cabins' next steps. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. Next, moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor Neil, that again, the clauses of our procedural bylaw be waived to allow Richard Hewitt to appear before council to speak to information report number three with respect to sleeping cabins' next steps. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. And then finally, moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor Neil, that the clauses of our procedural bylaw be waived to allow Andrew McCann and Eva Perkey to appear before council again to speak to information report number three with respect to the sleeping cabins. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, so with that out of the way, we'll move then to delegation number four, and we will invite Crystal Wilson to appear before council to speak to information report number three with respect to the sleeping cabins. Ms. Wilson, welcome, and you have the floor.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm sure that sometimes you're tired of hearing from me, but I wanted to remind you that two years ago, we had a Bell Park encampment, and that's where you started hearing from me. That's where I started helping people without homes. And it's been, it's been three years since my own child was successfully able to leave homelessness, which is a lot of what drives me to do this work. I have been, you know, meeting people on the streets, you're aware of that. I have met people in encampments. I have tried my best to relay to you the information that I learn, the stories that I hear when I'm, when I'm interacting with people who need homes. I, I know it was a risk, it was as a leap of faith, as Councillor Hill said, to allow us to try listening to the people who we help and listening to them in developing the solutions that they see would help, would work for them. So the pilot project allowing us to move forward and try, I'm very thankful for the opportunity we've been given to operate this pilot project. What I've seen and what I've learned is this cabin community has been a success. We have been able to stabilize people who have otherwise not engaged in traditional supportive housing. We, in the end, when we, when we chose our residents for the community, who we chose were people who did not engage in the systems, in the traditional systems. We had people who were recluse, who lived in the woods, who were living in storage locker, who were living in vehicle, and people who had been kicked out of traditional places or just could not thrive in traditional places. We didn't know if they would stay, but they did, all of them. And I think, you know, that alone speaks volumes to the work we've done. We heard a lot of concerns from the community about, at the beginning, before the pilot project launch, about what could happen, and, you know, understandably based on fears and based on a communication lapse that we share. But we've done our best to be open and transparent and communicate with the neighbors as much as we can. And I'm telling you, we've had the best neighbors we could possibly ask for. We've, we've met people who have changed their minds. We know that our residents have done a great job sharing their stories and opening themselves up to vulnerabilities by, by, you know, allowing people to understand what it was that brought them to this place to end up at the sleeping cabins. We, we are humbled and thankful for the neighbors who have supported us, for the whole community who have supported us, from Pastor Seth Perry and the St. Mark's Church to, to the neighbor that brings us milk every Sunday. And the, every, every, every act, every, you know, endearing, kind words that our residents have received have helped them to heal from the, from the pains that have caused them to end up without a home and, and the pains they've suffered when they, when they've been homeless. And so for, for, for all of us, for our community, and you'll hear from them later, but we just want to say to the entire community, thank you for supporting us. Thank you for keeping your minds open. And, and thank you to the people who changed their minds. We've received a number of people at our community who, who were originally opposed to the, to the idea. They, you know, had a difficult time understanding how it could help, who have come back and apologized to us and said that they, they can see the difference in our, in our community. And so we're thankful for them for keeping their minds open to, to, you know, possibilities. This, this project has allowed people to stabilize. It has enabled the medical community to engage with people who are desperate in need of medical assistance. We have two people who've accessed oral surgeons. We have one person who has accessed eye procedures who wasn't able to access from the streets. We have somebody that I, I've started fighting for at Bell Park, who is in desperate need of surgical procedure, who is now going to receive it because he's been stabilized in the, in the cabins. And so we spent a lot of work convincing medical professionals to, to, that our residents are stable enough to risk invasive procedures and that they be stable enough to heal in our community and not risk infection. This, this is important work. It's not just about housing. But housing, we're in a crisis, and, and, you know, this, this kind of community and continuing and expanding this kind of community and programming will help stabilize the unhoused community. We've seen the success from it. And we're just asking you tonight to consider continuing the program, allowing us to continue the work that we've been doing and, and keeping the ten residents that we do have right now stable in homes and roofs over their, over their heads.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Neil.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation. I'm just curious, I know there's been some concern expressed whether this extension may interfere with the plans of Cork, which is always a valued event here in Kingston. Have you been in communication with Cork? And are they comfortable with a couple of week extension?
We, we did, we did have an email exchange with Cork, and they, you know, they have expressed concern. We don't want to be in anybody's way. We just want to have stability for our residents, and we want them to feel safe. We, we do understand the operations of Cork, as I've expressed before. I used to be volunteer with them. They have indicated to us today that they do support our community and that eventually we will be in the way, but they were comfortable with us waiting until May seventeenth to, to transition to another location.
Thank you. And my final question, I believe you have ten residents now in
That's right.
in the sleeping cabins? If they were to, if, if they were to lose that option, I'm just wondering, would you foresee them going to a shelter or going to the integrated care hub? Or what would you see as the result if they lose their current lodging?
Well, I'm concerned because they've been so much progress while they've been with us. We keep track of all of their successes to help remind us and remind them and remind their other agencies the successes that they had, the progress they have been able to make here. My concern is that they would end up sliding backwards when they leave, if they leave this community instead of moving into housing. A number of our residents have already expressed that they will not go to the integrated care hub, they will not go to traditional shelters, settings. They, they have maybe tried those routes before, they have reasons to avoid it. So my, my concern and what they've expressed to me is that they will likely end up back in the places that we pulled them out of, and, and that is heartbreaking to me.
Thank you very much.
I thank you. Are there any other questions? Councillor Chappell.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Crystal, I had the pleasure of, is this working right? I had the pleasure of visiting. You invited me out to visit the, the, the housing setup, and I was impressed by how clean it was and how, how much camaraderie there seemed to be amongst the residents staying there. And so I'm somewhat concerned that, is Mike echoing or? Oh, good. I'm just hearing this weird feedback, sorry about that. So I'll rephrase my question, thank you, Worship. So I had an opportunity to visit. I was somewhat skeptical at the beginning. I was concerned about issues like policing and vandalism and potential impacts on those expensive boats that were nearby. So I was wondering, my first question is, can you describe to me how the community existed in a positive way there? And, and how there wasn't any, or describe if there's any issues with the boats or the properties and, and the maintenance and keeping the place clean? Just describe the environment that they were residing in.
So we, when, we operate generally three shifts on weekends, two shifts, and our staff have, we have four full-time staff. Our staff have a list of chores they're supposed to do on their shifts. And on, most times, those chores are done by the residents at the, at the resident's choice. So the residents are the ones keeping the community clean outside of the, outside of our common spaces. Residents doing the dishes, they often come in and mop the floors for us or clean the bathrooms. It's, it's the residents who've taken ownership over, over this location. And, and to be, you know, is a requirement of our contract to have staffing on site twenty-four seven. And often, I wonder why we have staff here sometimes? Because, you know, aside from the supportive and coordination of getting to people to appointments and getting their paperwork done, things like that, often we don't need to be here because they've taken ownership over the community. So I, I think that's what you've seen, you saw when you were here, is that the ten that are here have really, they really own the community. And they, you know, we've done a, a good job of, I think, of trying to balance boundaries and making sure people can operate as adults and as independently as possible while making them feel like this is their home. And we certainly, we put a number of residents through our staff training because we do see that it would be a benefit to the entire unhoused community to have some of our residents operate as staff in this kind of location. In terms of policing, we have not had any police calls against our own residents. A couple of times, we've had to call M.S.R. for mental health supports for other people. We haven't, as far as I'm aware, until I read the letter from the Tall Ships Expedition, I didn't even, we hadn't even had one minor concern. We had a team lined up of volunteers to be able to address community concerns and help us navigate them, and we never had to call on them. We have had only ambulance calls for transportation for somebody who is extremely vulnerable, but otherwise, it's been, it's been a little bit boring here in terms of, in terms of emergency services.
Thank you. Well, my, my final question is how cost-effective this has been from a taxpayer's perspective? You're certainly running well under budget, and I was wondering if you can explain how this has been so successful, so possible, with being so cost-effective?
So the initial capital outlay of $191,000, that was for the purchase of the cabins. Our operating cost, it runs approximately $3,500 per week, and that's to mostly cover staffing costs. So I think as you've seen from the information report, with the two very generous donations from community members of $257,000, $250,000, this, this project has cost taxpayers $7,000 in provincial funds.
Okay, thank you. Next is Councillor Osterhoff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson, and I just wanted to agree with Councillor Chappell that I too am very impressed with how things have gone and the community coming together as it, as it has. And for you too, Crystal, you've done amazing work. And I was on the other side of, I wasn't supportive of it being there. I don't, I can say that out loud, but I, I've learned a lot from this and watching you. And, you know, you've shown that good things can happen with, with opposition. So I thank you for that. And the question I had, thank you, Mayor Patterson, is what, do we already have some plans? Like, I'm prepared to be supportive of a, a short extension, but do you have an idea of what, what can happen from here, where we can go?
I understand that city staff are looking for a permanent location. I understand they've been looking for an alternate location. We've been tasked with finding motel rooms for our ten residents, plus use one as, as an office. Unfortunately, so far, the, the, the only option we've been able to find, and I know city staff are looking as well, the only option we've been able to find for motel rooms is at a cost of $129 per night, per hotel room. And it will increase to $149 per night in the summer, when we, we haven't been able to secure from that operator a long-term commitment. It would be, it would be on a weekly and then nightly and weekly basis that they would allow us to stay there. On top of that, we have one gentleman who is On top of that, we have one gentleman who is, has access, is in a wheelchair and we require an accessible room for him. And that has proved difficult to be able to find a hotel room that could accommodate that.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you. Next is Counsel Baum.
Thank you, Worship. And through you, I guess my question would be, I've got quite a few questions from the community, a lot of support coming in for this. So beyond obviously city council and, and different levels of government supporting this, a lot of members of the community have been wondering, what can they do to, to help support this project and possibly see it expand in its success in the future? So how could people reach out with either volunteering time or donations or, or materials to support this further?
Thank you. We, I absolutely have been overwhelmed with support to the point where we, we turned down volunteer, volunteers because we, we were not sure what to ask them to do in terms of being onsite because the residents are taking care of themselves. But we do have volunteers doing driving and picking up food bank orders for us, picking up from Martha's table. Community Friends in Motion has been supporting us in coming into the place. And in terms of what the community can do, we need a location, like a permanent location. If somebody has land, that's really what we need the most. But coming and listening and sharing stories and helping, helping the community understand how people come to, to be in a place where they don't have a home. I think, you know, more people coming and just having conversation. It helps our residents. It helps them understand that there's a, there's a bigger community that are supportive of them and, and want to see success for them too. We do have a website. It's Aralivable Solutions. My email address is info@aralivable solutions, or aralivable.solutions, sorry. And so if people want to write with ideas, we've had lots of kind of unique situations like Joe's Mills put a, put a guitar on permanent loan to us. And that's been, you know, a nice add-in to our, to our programming. And then, you know, but really we need homes and we need a permanent location for the cabin community.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that answer.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Wilson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to our next delegation. We will invite Richard Hewitt to appear before council again to speak to information report number three with respect to the sleeping cabins. Mr. Hewitt, if you are there.
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Patterson, City Council. Thank you for giving me some time and your time to express a few things. It's difficult to really explain the situation of being homeless. But 10 years ago, my little world fell apart and I ended up on a walkabout and ended up here in Kingston. I tried to take my own life 10 years ago and 10 years later I find myself fighting for my life. It's not a matter of mental health issues either. It's just a matter of trying to find a place to be able to rebuild and restart. But nothing about trying to explain or express myself for the last few days. I know I'm just going to have a chance here and I'm becoming somewhat tongue-tied, but I'm not usually at a loss for words. The cabin community here has, has been something that I had listened to last summer and, and I, I met Crystal Wilson, I guess about eight months ago. And I thought it was a good idea. I didn't really understand it, but as I found through the winter, my resources ran out. I was staying in a motel and I ran out of funds, ran out of time, and I ended up here. And somebody had passed away, one of the residents, and I ended up being able to get in here. And I could have been one of the statistics, so it wouldn't have been a pleasant one. But this has given me a chance to restart because when you're on the street, if you've been homeless, you don't have any time. You're homeless, being homeless is like having a full-time job, really, because you're always struggling to survive and get through the next day. And you don't always have the energy or the wherewithal afterwards to, you know, look after a dentist appointment or do shopping or get, get the little things done that you think that there's tons of time for. The, the path that this, these communities, it's given everyone here a, a chance to open up again and be with other people and be in a livable community as well and function as a normal person again. And it's the, the way that a lot of homelessness is looked upon is that it is a perennial thing and not everyone is perennial as far as wanting to be here. This is not somewhere I expected to be. I had my own business in Toronto for 25 years. I did renovations and swimming pools. I didn't expect to be here, but when things happen, you never know sometimes. With that, I hope I put at least a slight positive slant on, on this community. And the, I'd like to thank the people, the outpouring of people that have genuinely give a rat's you-know-what about the people otherwise have been ignored. And the outpouring of their generosity and time and listening and actually listening, not just hearing, but listening to people is a huge step forward for all of us. And your time again is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you, thank you, Mr. Hewitt, for your time. I have a question about the location of the cabins. Do you have any perspective on whether it matters where they are? Or is it just that they are together no matter where they are?
That's a good question. We're still in the, obviously in the experimental stage, but the, the progress that has been, that I've seen, if we're in close proximity, then we're living like in a neighborhood. So, and that's, that's the community aspect of it. And it's
Human beings.
Yeah, and, and feeling like we're just contributing to society instead of walking the streets and just, you know, trying to exist, you know, existing. And that's where, that, that becomes a very difficult thing, just existing as opposed to being contributed, giving back and being able to keep clean. There was a question earlier about the concern about the safety of the properties and the boats here. I can tell you this, from the bottom of my heart, if anyone was messing around with anything on this property, I'd be the first to step up. And I'd be calling the police and make sure that there was no damage to happen to anything here.
And I did that while I was here.
So the, that, that is, as they found out that the, the, just hang on there. So can you repeat the last part of that question for a second, please?
The location.
The location.
If you had an opinion, either way, that's fine.
My, my opinion would be the location in proximity to the cabins being in, in a group or just in proximity to the city center.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is, yeah, oh, that was the same question. Are there any other questions? Mr. Hewitt, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you, counsel.
Okay. With that, we'll move to our sixth and final delegation. We will invite Andrew McCann and Eva Perkey, who will speak to council again with respect to information report number three, the sleeping cabins and next steps. So, Mr. McCann, Ms. Perkey, welcome. And you have the floor.
Thank you, everybody, for having us. We live right across the street from the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor with our two young children. And, yeah, do you want to talk with the kids?
Oh, no. All I would say is that, I mean, I think, and Andrew will say the same, and I think that the gentleman who just spoke said the same thing. First of all, that, that there's been, I mean, I don't think either Andrew or I ever thought that this was, we spoke to city council before this started. So this was obviously something that we were supportive of from the beginning, but also something that I think is just, we have, as neighbors, we have not heard anything but positive feedback about this experiment in this community. Our kids play in the park just around the corner from where the sleeping cabins are. You know, they go and they play anytime that they want. It's never been a security concern. When the people first moved in, there was just a couple of people who had moved in. And we came over and talked to people briefly and, you know, people offered to shovel snow, which, you know, again, I hope my kids will do. But there was just, it's just been a completely non-problematic, positive experience for our community. I don't think either of us have heard any concerns. And I think that what Mr. Hewitt, I believe his name was, just before us said in terms of the importance of living in a community, of being able to support each other and be active community members. And, you know, hopefully if the cabins had actually, I, I understand that they're not going to stay where they are, but if they had been in our community longer, in fact, there would have been more relationships that would develop between the neighbors in the community and the people living in the cabins.
I'm, I'm just going to quickly read three different messages from three other family, people who live within a block or less than 100 meters of the cabins. So Bertie Galeno, who lives on Moat Street, is a retired principal, said, "Two or three times a day, I walk my dog through village, sometimes walking by the sleeping cabins. Right from the beginning, I supported them. On these walks, I talk to neighbors, asking if there are any problems with our new neighbors. Not even one has expressed concern and those, even those who found faults at the beginning. When I walk the cabins, I see people pitching and keeping things in good condition. I hope council can come up with a temporary solution while folks look for more permanent housing." Michael Sayer, who lives on Young Street, says that he lives 97 Young Street, close to the site. And he's noticed no negative impacts on the harbor area and that fellow residents have been grateful for the opportunity that has been shown and that the people who live there voluntarily cleaned up the area with a great deal of spirit. He'd be pleased to see the cabins back. He thinks it's a good use of the space and he appreciates Aralivable Solutions' work to manage the site well. And then Carolyn Barnett, who lives on Richard Street, who was originally, amongst others, very concerned about the cabins, wrote, "As older residents who live close by the harbor, my local friends have found that having the, the sleeping cabins and their occupants has been an interesting venture in our neighborhood. We have gone through our kitchens and found bits and things that we've brought over and some baking from time to time. Our chats as we take our walks around the harbor have been delightful. We hear music blasting from the windows. Walking through the harbor with a couple of village women nearly daily, we are, we were concerned about the residents and we are very concerned about them returning in the streets as one told them they might have to. It almost seems as though they have created their own village by the harbor. It has been a success, though sadly it's not in a place that could be permanent to help people move forward with their lives." So I just want to, I just want to say that I think this project is a huge, a big, but obviously small piece of the much broader public policy discussion on housing. This isn't outside-the-box solution. It's a short-term solution. It's a transitional solution. It's also, as you guys have already noted in this meeting, very affordable. You could easily imagine within a year or two, having almost no people out in the cold, out on the streets in our city, by having these cabins in small groups around town and public spaces. That's obviously challenging. As we saw in the village, there was pushback from people before they understood, before they understood how respectful and integrated these small groups could be. And, but I think it's really important right now for council to think about continuity of not moving these cabins into storage because they may never come back out again. It's hard to get them into communities. I also think you need to think, I hope you would think about continuity of leadership. Crystal and the Aralivable Solutions Group have provided tremendous effort and leadership here. And if they move on to other projects, because this gets mothballed for a year or two, you might not get them back. But ultimately, this is about dignity and fairness in our community. It's about sharing our resources and our space and having vision to hopefully think outside the box. I would suggest you move them over to Lake Ontario Park where there's lots of plugs and, and space. And it's also here in Portsmouth where we're used to having these members of our community.
I just want to add one thing to that, if I may. So as a physician, I've not provided healthcare, obviously, for any of the people in this cabin, but I have provided healthcare for people who live in hotels and who come out of hospital and are sent to discharge to hotels or who come off the street and who live in hotels. And I'm sure that people have had positive experiences, but the patients that I have provided care for in hotels have been isolated, have often had problems with, you know, social isolation and all of the problems that got them into an unhoused situation to begin with. And, you know, are sometimes found in very difficult conditions because they don't have that sense of community. They don't have people looking out for them. And, and they're isolated in these spaces.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just going to, I'm just going to jump in now, just because we're at time. And I'll just ask if there are any questions from council? Okay. Seeing none, thank you both very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. So we have no other delegations this evening. We have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Counsel McLaren?
Thank you. I have a petition bearing about 140 signatures addressed to Mayor Patterson and City Council, which reads, "We, the undersigned, identify as experiencing homelessness. We cannot add our addresses to the petition because we do not have one, but we attest to the fact that we are currently doing our best to survive within the city of Kingston's boundaries. We request that the city of Kingston to continue support for the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor Sleeping Cabin Initiative. We would like to live within a cabin community and see this style of living as a way for us to maintain our dignity and independence while securing our belongings and ourselves and enabling us to address individual challenges we face with support." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Counsel Neal.
Thank you very much. And I have a petition from the communities around Wright Crescent. And it asks, "Of special interest is identification of Wright Crescent Neighborhood as a special study area in order that future development addresses the issues described in this petition and the, the request that the city hold public meetings with Wright Crescent residents with an app, with, when any applications are made." The attached are 109 signatures from Kingsland Townhomes, Kinsman Housing, Crescent Towers, and Kingston Seventh Day Adventist Church. And I do believe it was also sent electronically to the clerks, but I will give this to the clerks as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel Doherty?
Thank you. And through you, I have a petition to present from the Kingston Interfaith Women's Group. Please accept this petition on behalf of the Kingston Interfaith Women Group regarding the sleeping cabins currently in use at the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor. I'd just like to add that I have already sent this to the clerk. And at the time when I forwarded, it was an electronic petition. There were at least 468 names on that petition. I'm sure there are more now. And quite a few neighbor Portsmouth Olympic Harbor neighborhood people signed the petition. I would say at least half of the community signed it. We are grateful for the initial support of the cabins from Kingston City Council. Our goal in writing this petition is to advocate for continued support from the Kingston community and specifically to strongly encourage city council to continue to support the sleeping cabins in the future. Together with many other groups that were instrumental in furnishing the cabins, we have followed the processes in place in the daily running of the cabins. We believe this is a very successful venture for all involved, including the Kingston, the greater Kingston community. Many people who were initially skeptical of this project have been pleasantly surprised by the positive outcome and are now supportive of this initiative. We understand that homelessness remains a complicated and daunting problem for many cities in Canada. However, as the time draws near for the pilot to end, our understanding is that city council has not given any indication whether the project will be allowed to continue. We implore city council to continue the financial assistance of this project and grant permission for the sleeping cabins to move to another appropriate location in the city which would house more people. As you well know, homelessness does not just affect the unhoused. It affects our whole community. It is incumbent upon us as a proud and caring community to take care of the most vulnerable and support them in a way that optimally will see them transition to independent living. We see the sleeping cabin project as a necessary first step in making this a reality. Many thanks to you and city council for your support of the sleeping cabinets. Sincerely, the Kingston Interfaith Women's Group.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no other petitions, we do have one motion of condolence. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council will be extended to former city clerk Carolyn Downs on the passing of her husband John on Sunday, April 10th. John was a longtime minister in Kingston and served for many years as a chaplain with Corrections Canada. He will be greatly missed by many family and friends and our thoughts are with them during this difficult time. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have no deferred motions, so we will move on to reports. First, we have report number 40 from the CIO.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Baum, that report number 40 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
Okay, there are four clauses in report number 40. Would anyone like any of them separated?
Counselor Chappelle? Okay, if there are no separations, then we'll vote on them as a whole. So clause one, traffic and parking bylaw minor amendments. You want that one separated? Okay, we'll come back to that in a moment. Clause two, so we will, we'll put clause one aside. Clause two, award of contract supply of hot mix asphalt material. Clause three, award of contracts, bridge cleaning, pressure washing and sealing and consulting services, lack of city of Kingston shoreline infrastructure structural conditions assessments and bathymetric survey. And clause four, award of contract annual monitoring and reporting for two closed municipal landfills. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. So now we'll circle back to clause one, traffic and parking bylaws minor amendments. Counselor Chappelle?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I would just like to thank staff for bringing forward amendments for Holes Grove Public School in Westbrook. It's been certainly a very concerning area that required some, some attention. But I do have a question for Mr. Semple, if he's available, with regards to parking issues on Thornwood Crescent that hits behind Catarocky Woods Public School. And I know it may be difficult to add something like that tonight, but I'd like to have a conversation with respect to parking issues that, that, because it's an access point to the community school.
So I'll allow it. But this, I don't want to set a precedent where an item like this allows us for discussions on any, any street in the community as a whole.
Well, I guess the question could be phrased as why was Thornwood Public, Thornwood Crescent not considered part of this?
Noted. Mr. Semple?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Chappelle, I think some of the issues, we're, we see issues at, at school areas across the city, so these changes that are in this report represent the work that we were doing in fall of 2021 and some of the recommendations that come from that to change our parking and traffic bylaws. We can certainly look at, at that particular street Thornwood. I, I know you forwarded me some information on that. It's, it, we can't, because it, because those changes require changes to the bylaw and the schedule. I think the preferred approach would be for us to review the issue, look at what the conditions are, and then provide some information back about next steps.
Thank you. That's very satisfactory. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We'll call the vote on clause one. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, under report number 41 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor O'Sannick, seconded by Counselor Chappelle, that report number 41 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, clause one, More Homes for Everyone Act 2020, status of emergency orders under the Reopening Ontario Act 2020. Counselor O'Sannick?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you, just a question to staff. We received correspondence today that it looks like the provincial government has already put through this bill 109 right before the long weekend. Is that true? So we, we can't even submit these comments at this point.
Commissioner Agnew?
Thank you and through you. I hope you can hear me okay. That is correct, that Bill 109 received royal assent on April 14th, so it came as a bit of a surprise to staff. However, they are continuing with the commenting period until the end of April, so staff intend to submit comments anyway and hoping that there could potentially be modifications to the regulations that implement the legislation that may come from the province, but you are correct, Counselor.
Okay. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. So then on the, I guess the first, one of the more significant changes related to the timing and approval of the OP. Can, can staff maybe speak to what, what the delay of approval of our OP might look like in terms of some of the climate initiatives that we've been talking about as part of that, that, the, the newer version?
Mr. Agnew?
Thank you and through you. Certainly, it's of concern and we, we have requested and will be requesting more information to understand the nature of, of that change in particular, as well as some of the more significant changes with respect to timing of decisions and a suggested framework that would require refunding of fees if council isn't able to make timing our decisions within the timeline stipulated. So again, there's a lot of details that haven't really been spelled out. And we intend to follow up and seek more clarification and that's part of the comments that we would like to submit following this meeting. Should council support them?
Okay. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you and through you. Thank you to staff for the comments and I thought it was a very instructive report. I was wondering about the application fees that could potentially be waived. I think it was 100% after 240 days, so-called delay. What type of money would this amount to? Do we have a dollar figure or maybe even a rough estimate? Because from my little experience on planning, a number of files would far surpass that, that time, timeline. So for refunding all these application fees, what would that look like for the, the coffers?
Thank you and through you. We were able to do some high-level estimates in preparation for this meeting, although we haven't had a lot of time, so looking at some general timelines. The one thing that our system doesn't currently account for when it looks at timestamping the process of, of going through the application, technical review, all the way through decision is the time that it's actually back with the applicant. And we are certainly pursuing those, those questions as well with the ministry because it's not just the time that it's with staff to make a decision, but after we do technical review, there's usually a protracted period of time where the applicant is then addressing whatever the comments have been related to the technical review and, and currently that is being counted as part of the overall timing for decision. So looking at the way that it's been scoped out at a high-level counselor and we tried to look at it about five or six years' worth of data, I think we would be well over a million dollars in terms of revenues that the municipality has collected if, and that would be a conservative estimate that would, would have been in a position of refund based on how the structural changes have been proposed by the province. So it's, it's quite significant.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. I would just comment, that's too bad. That's a significant amount of money. Given the fact, as you said, structurally, this is not only on the municipality. Another question is about the bump up and whether or not, now that, as Counselor O'Sannick pointed out, this has become law, we even have the, the ability, or would we recommend that we don't bump up given the changes in that regard?
I think in some respects, the motivation here was ensuring that there was a delegation of authority relative to site plans to staff consistently across the province. Our municipality has had that in its bylaw for an extended period of time. However, your question related to bump ups in, in particular, I think relative to the timing constraints that the province is looking at implementing relative to zoning bylaw and site plan applications, that certainly any type of bump up does add some additional time to the process that I think council has found worthwhile relative to addressing public concerns. But that would, would likely be at times, at the expense of potential refunds based on the way the province has structured these potential changes.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions on clause one? Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, I can remember, I think I remember you speaking once previously about the percentage of the fees, how much fees are, it was a percentage of the total cost of the housing as produced. Do you remember those remarks?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. At times, we have been presenting information usually as part of the annual fee review. And in the last couple of years, we have done fee analysis for all of our planning applications, building permits and licensing. That has informed some of the changes we've made with respect to planning application fees and some of the increases that we've recommended over time. It ranges anywhere from, you know, getting close to 40-something percent. In some cases, we do a little bit better in cost recovery. In some categories, we're, we're down closer to 20 or 25%. It's not an equal amount across the board. Generally speaking, in the larger fee categories, the zoning bylaw, official plan amendment, site plans, where we generate the majority of our fees, we try to aim for a 50% cost recovery relative to what it's costing the municipality and staff time to process those applications to arrive at a decision point.
Right, so that all speaks to the loss of money to the municipality that was referenced in Counselor Kylie's answer. So I just wanted to reemphasize that. What I was getting at is, this is what I remember and I'm not, was that I think at one point you told us that of the total cost to the buyer of the housing, perhaps fees was 5% of the total cost. Do you remember that?
I can't recall specifically counsel, but typically with construction management and when people are planning large projects, the soft costs associated with whether it's studies or fees usually is about 10% of the overall project costs is, is a general like conservative estimate used by the industry.
Okay. My point is this, that dealing with fees, I mean, you don't want to charge for things people aren't getting value for. I think it's arguable the city and other citizens are getting value for. The, you don't want to lose the perspective that this isn't going to solve affordability. It's a lot of talk about something that isn't going to have much effect. So that was my first point. The other thing was, I had a number of questions. When we're talking about the surety funds for completing a project says per the city's regulations, it talked about how we usually receive those fees in cash or check or I think it's a credit card. And what other options are there and how does the city see those options affecting its position?
Thank you, Counselor and through you. So typically with respect to securities that we take through the development process, some are, are given to us in cash. Some would be done by maybe a certified check, but oftentimes, especially for larger amounts, it's by way of letter of credit. And the letter of credit's particularly, some developers, I think some of the feedback that's come through the, the provincial roundtable and discussions that's happened over the last couple of years is the development industry has identified that as, you know, a fi, a financial cash flow constraint. So certainly part of the changes that are being recommended now are looking at more of a surety or a bonding, different type of, of security taking that doesn't have the impact on, on the cash flow associated with the applicant going through the process. I believe Ms. Morley is also on tonight's meeting and may have some additional comments to offer on this particular matter.
Ms. Morley?
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. Commissioner Agnew has summarized it accurately. A letter of credit is essentially a promise by the bank to advance up to a certain amount of money to one party if the other party defaults. In the surety bond situation, it's a guarantee by a third party, usually an insurance company, that agrees to assume the defaulting party's obligation. So generally, from the city's perspective, letters of credit are easier to collect on because the beneficiary can simply present documentation to the bank and demand payment. Payments under surety bonds are usually more drawn out and involve a greater risk of litigation. There are some more modern forms of surety bonds that can be drafted to provide similar benefits as a letter of credit, but based on the wording of the regulation, it's unclear to us what the municipality will be able to dictate in terms of the structure of the surety bonds.
Thank you. I think that's really important. And so thank you very much. The one thing I wanted to say, just as a comment, those are the changes to the Housing Services Act. I couldn't believe some of the stuff that was in there because it's actually progressive. Stuff we've been arguing for and about for the whole time I was ever in this, in the not-for-profit sector is said to be going to happen there. Things we thought were just commonsensical. I'm not going to go through every one of them, but actually, some of that is well worthwhile and it's about time. So I thought I'd say there are some positive things here. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. And sorry for not being a little preppy on this. This was inspired by comments by Counselor Kylie. Given that the, the timeframe is being changed or being sort of speeded up, does this not put extra pressure on the developer as well to fulfill their end of the bargain? For could we not, or could staff not present it to council with a negative recommendation because they have not done their job yet? And avoid losing that million or so dollars each and every time?
Mr. Agnew?
Thank you and through you. And if I understand the, the question correctly, Counselor McLaren, is that in order to receive the, the timing of the decision, it requires both parties to do their work. So you're suggesting that if we didn't have the information, staff could advance a negative recommendation to council? Suggesting that we don't have what we require to make that recommendation, so therefore we would suggest turning down? Is that, is that your question?
Yes, essentially the idea being to light a fire under a developer who may be dragging their feet trying to beat the clock or maybe in this case, pass the clock.
I think, I think potentially that could be an outcome of, of what happens. Like I said, it, it would depend on, on both, both parties being able to come to the table to, to meet the timeframe, which would require the, I think in, in some ways, what the province is thinking is that some of these regulations are going to result in better applications being made upfront and more complete applications and potentially what's happening now. And then municipalities having to chase people for more information or additional information and that's protracting the actual process itself.
That raises another question. Do we have any flexibility on when we can declare an application deemed complete? Can we delay that until all our questions have been answered and it becomes just a pass the legislative hurdles to pa, to passing it or, or not? Do we have any leeway on when we can declare something to be complete?
The process of deeming applications complete now is, is dictated by the province and municipalities have 30 days typically to do so. What isn't clear and where we often have difficulty is, is the, the grayer area of an applicant submitting a study that technically is on the list of requirements for the submission, but it's actually the quality of the study that may be in question, not whether they submitted one at all and, and did the study adequately cover off all of, all of the substantive nature of what needs to, to be in there. So that's the part that's a little bit tricky with all of this is it's not just checking a box and saying there's something in there, which often what happens for the deeming. But staff also have to have the time to get into the detail of reviewing all those studies in detail, which as you can imagine, when there's multiple of them, plus all the planning rationale and the details, information that comes in with the, with the site plan itself or, or the development concept, it's very difficult to do that within 30 days, which is the requirement. So sometimes, you know, we're having that difficulty now and I'm not sure how that system is actually going to be resolved in any way with the provincial changes as they're suggested. I don't think it's going to improve that unfortunately.
Well, I'm sure you'll have my support if you can find ways to save us those million-dollar refunds.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll call the vote on clause one. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by vote of 12 to one. Counselor Stroud opposed. Clause two, Confederation Basin Promenade. Call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Clause three, 11 Wright Crescent Subordination and Standstill Agreement with Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Clause four, 2022 Final Tax Levy and Tax Rates. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by vote of 12 to one. Counselor Chappelle opposed. Okay, moving on to, we have nothing under Committee of the Whole. If you have any information reports, if you have any questions, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month criteria for delegation of authority for the month of February twenty twenty-two. Number two, twenty twenty-three Budget Engagement Plan. Counselor Sanik.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I just have a couple of questions to staff. I saw that when we send out our tax bills, like we paid twenty-eight thousand dollars to send out the tax bills last, I guess that would have been in February or so. And so anyway, since e-post is going away, I just wondered, I guess it would be for February of next year, like will there be any new ways that we can get our tax bill, like through email or somehow download them that would then save on postage, but also like e-post is going away. So what substitute are we working on to get the tax for, because as the budget process, the report talked a lot about property tax bills and how we're getting them.
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we're currently in the process at looking at what some of those alternatives are, but perhaps I do have Mr. Walker at the meeting tonight, and he may have a little more detail to add in some of the efforts that we were currently underway with.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Yes, we are currently working with both our billing provider and our ISNT department to provide both of what you were asking about there, councillor, both a view of tax accounts for people to be able to look at their own tax account, including a payment history and bill amount, any information that would currently be showing on their bill. And also to receive a bill electronically through email would also be included in that. So we have meetings ongoing right now and we hope to have that in place before the end of the year.
Perfect. Yeah, that sounds great. Thanks so much. There is another part of the report where it talked about the feedback, right? So we're going to be getting the residents to give us, you know, like the initiatives where they think their tax dollars should go, getting all that feedback. I know for this past budget that we had in November was the first time that we got feedback. And so I'm just wondering with this feedback, does staff actually look at all the initiatives that residents are putting forward and do they come up with, you know, do they assess the initiatives and see if any initiatives, you know, are good ideas to put forward? Or does the onus fall on us as councillors to look at the initiatives and to, you know, like see one that catches our eye and then bring it forward in a motion? So that's what I'm wondering for twenty, like even for the ones that we just saw, are staff looking at them, bringing them forward? Or is it up to us to capture any that look good and then bring it forward? How does that work?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So thanks for that question, councillor. So yes, there's a couple of things we do. So yes, staff, we communicate all of the results to staff, mainly through the directors and the CMT group. And so last year, what we did, some of the general feedback that came back goes to staff so that they can start to incorporate that into the budget development process. We did last year have a couple of open-ended questions, which we've got a number of responses back. And our Director of Financial Services actually went through, sorted all of them and provided them by department to each of the directors so that they were getting even the open-ended question information. We also provide to the agencies because we do get some comments back with respect to the agencies. So one of the things that we've been trying to do with respect to this annual process is to focus not only on the current year budget, but on the future projected budget. So our four-year operating and our fifteen-year capital, so that it wouldn't necessarily be something that we would be building into the current budget, but it might be something that would be impacted into future year budgets. And so we've been trying to set the stage with the public in that regard as well. So it may be more of a longer-term response. But yes, though, the information is all provided out to the staff. Any of our open-ended question information is provided to staff so that they can incorporate that into their budget development.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Hill?
Thank you. And through you, your worship. One of the things I'm wondering about is in terms of the engagement process, we, you know, I know that you've made very substantial efforts in terms of trying to engage the public. And I think with, you would agree that with some mixed results, some of the events went very well and some, you know, limited participation. And then I would suspect that often when folks have an interest in a particular budgetary issue, you're going to hear from them. Have we ever used polling in a way to kind of get a broader sense in the community of the direction that we're going in? And do you see that as a possibility in terms of getting feedback that has, you know, maybe gives us a broader sense of what the community is looking for?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, we have attempted some polling. So as you're aware, we do the annual survey piece and I can mention that in a moment. But on the polling piece, we actually did some polls the very first, a couple of years ago, the first engagement process that we did. And it was really just to kind of take the pulse of the community around some of their awareness of the budget and the budget process and what council's responsibilities are and some of those things. And that went fairly well. We had to keep it very narrowly focused in terms of what your poll questions were. And that was a challenge because it's difficult to sort of provide full context like we do more so in a survey. But it was one that I would say worked well in terms of, because polls tend to be sort of quick, don't take a lot of time, somebody can jump online and do them fairly quickly. But that was a bit of a challenge in terms of what to ask that you could keep a sort of a very narrow scope. So it's certainly something that we can look at again, councillor, in terms of how we might be able to use it. The survey actually has been one that's been very successful. And one of the things that we are doing this year is we're keeping three or four questions, sort of a couple of topic areas the same, so that we start to get a bit of trend as well. So we're thinking we may get different respondents. And so we can start to look at some of the trend around things like services, service priorities, the split between taxes and fees and charges. So there's a couple of areas like that, that we're continuing to ask very, very similar questions, expand them maybe a little bit in terms of scope, but so we still could get a bit of a trend as to what's going on. And then I think the final piece I would say is that we are, as we're having various conversations in different settings, particularly when we're doing the in-person pop-ups that we did last year, is having conversations with the folks around, how do we do the budget engagement? So what do people see as being what they like to participate in? Do they like the virtual meetings? Do they like the in-person? Do they like the surveys, the quick answers? They like to have Q and A sessions, that type of thing. And so we continue to sort of get feedback informally from folks as well on that and what they would like. And that's something that we have actually discussed to do next year as a poll, is just how we're actually engaging. And that might be an area where we could actually use that poll tool to get some feedback on that.
Next is Counsel Holland.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And thank you for the report. One question on outreach to equity-seeking groups. Just wondering if the EDI committee will be involved in the early stages or if there are specific areas of the engagement that you think would address, would sort of address any barriers for participation, providing feedback from marginalized groups?
So thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for that question. So yes, we will involve our manager of EDI with respect to some of the processes and what we're doing. We've actually had quite a bit of discussion around various groups and populations and expanding that scope to make sure that we are all-inclusive. And that's certainly been one of our objectives with the various tools is to do that. Some of the other things that we've been looking at and some advice that we actually got from some of the not-for-profit agencies in the community that we had some informal discussions around, was to attempt to use the agency's structures to do that as opposed to trying to do that ourselves. So where we're identifying perhaps target populations to utilize some of those partnerships with the agencies and allow and utilize them and their relationships with the community to try to get some feedback. So that's something we haven't implemented necessarily yet, but certainly something that the team is having some conversations as to how we can do that specific to EDI. We are actually doing it this year with respect to our seniors population and actually the seniors association has been very supportive. And we will be doing a session later in May, I believe it is, with that organization. So we're testing it out with that, but certainly that's something that we're targeting with respect to the EDI and will certainly utilize some of the assistance of our manager of EDI to help us with that.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on then to number three, sleeping cabins next steps. Counsel Doherty?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I just wonder if we could, the delegations clearly shared with us the success of this pilot project. And I live in the area as well, and I can attest to it. It's been a really fantastic experience. We had a meeting in December with the community and it was a real, it wasn't that there was opposition, it's just that there was a new project coming to our community and people had questions. But they had lots of opportunities to be heard and staff were there as well as our livable solutions. So we had great conversations and I think that was part of the reason the project was so successful. But also I want to just thank Crystal and her team and the residents there. I think everybody really was dedicated to make this successful. I just, with this report, I also want to thank staff for the report. And I would like to hear, hear a little bit from staff, like how often did you, did staff meet with OLS throughout the project? And if you could share just a little bit about that, as well as this extension till May seventeenth, if you believe that will be helpful, because it would give you another month from today to try to find an alternative location. And also in the third question is that Kitchener and Waterloo introduced a pilot project. Well, I wasn't sure, actually, maybe it wasn't even, maybe it didn't even start as a pilot project. Perhaps it was always going to be a permanent project. But I understand that the Kitchener Waterloo Sleeping Cabins project is very successful. So I wonder if you could share with us what made theirs so successful? Because it seems everything to date has been successful, but the next step, the transition from May seventeenth, that's the information that we just wonder about if, May seventeenth or April thirtieth, depends on if the motion passes. So if just staff could share with us some information there. Thanks.
Okay, I'll see you, Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll get started and try to answer some of the questions asked by Counsel Dorothy and Director Nordograph will then jump in and help me out. So to your question, councillor, in terms of meeting with OLS, I believe that staff were meeting pretty much on a weekly basis with the organization, just touching base, making sure that things were progressing as they should and providing support. In terms of the extension that is being proposed, there's no question that it does provide us with some additional time. We have been working on an assessment of location. And I do want to point out to council that what we have been reviewing are locations that can provide the amenities that OLS has identified as being critical. Those include not just washrooms and showers, but kitchen, laundry, meeting space. And the reason for that, it's because they're providing support services. They're also providing people with the ability to learn how to live independently. It's not just about having a shower in a washroom facility. It's far more than that. And that's why I do think the program has been successful. So the locations we've been looking at are basically ones that would provide those amenities. And I'm sure you can appreciate that there are not many properties that have all of these amenities available and that the city controls. So we are still doing some work. We can report back with some options on May seventeenth and provide council with short-term and some longer-term options at that point in time and some costing as well. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Director Nordograph to comment on the Kitchener model.
Thank you for that. And through you, Mayor Patterson. Just to add to the comments, Kitchener Waterloo was obviously a model that was brought to council and you might recall a delegation as well from Kitchener Waterloo in the summer of twenty twenty-one. The Vija Waterloo, which is the service manager, has been involved with a one-time financial contribution of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to support one specific transition from one location to another location. The Kitchener Waterloo model has been mainly run by community groups. There is kind of a social planning council equivalence that has been quite involved as well. But they have been moving multiple times. And there definitely is a different kind of type of partnership with the city. I would say it's a little bit more community managed. And the city has been supported where they can, but has not been, it's been more a model that has been presented by the community to the city rather. And here in the Kingston model, obviously, we were very lucky that we were able to utilize the POH location and utilize the bar fifty-three location because to see hurdles points, that allowed our staff to really make the facility available in a very short time.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So you're saying that in Kitchener and Waterloo, the city actually didn't choose the locations that came from the community? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Goff, you're just on mute.
I am getting used to this new, this new system here, sorry. So there have been, there have been different parties involved. Again, I noticed that it has been involved in supporting the project, but definitely locations have been provided or suggested by different parties. The school board has been involved. There's been private landlords that have been involved in the project as well. And again, they have been moved to different locations because, again, quite often those locations were temporary. I hope that helps.
Yeah, just one more question, if I may. So how many times did they move around before they found a permanent location? And did we reach out to school boards and private landlords? And who did we all reach out to?
We have reached out to multiple parties so far. Again, we also have identified in the reports and even in November that we obviously are open to any other suggestions. But we have reached out to all of our existing service partners that are running social services or services and potentially have a site. We've reached out to churches. We have reached out to, we have explored kind of private properties that we are familiar with that could be utilized. So we've definitely done quite a wide search already. But again, back to the comments made earlier, it is also really important to have a site that does have the services available for the project to be able to success, to be successful.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll carry on. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we have three motions. First, moved by Counsel Kylie, second by Counsel McLaren, that the resignation of Cameron Marsh from the Kingston Frontenac Public Library Board be received with regret. Number two, moved by Counsel Hill, seconded by Counsel Holland, that as requested by Megan Naught, Tourism Kingston, council proclaimed the week of May twenty-ninth to June fourth, twenty twenty-two as Tourism Awareness Week in Kingston. And number three, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, that notwithstanding section three point one, two, point two, section one, and three point one, three subsection three of the flag display policy, council approved the application submitted by Jordan Jackson from the Kingston Frontenac for flag raising on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two in recognition of the Kingston Frontenac entering this year's OHL playoffs. We will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to new motions. We have one new motion, moved by Counsel Neal, seconded by Counsel Kylie. Whereas the deadline for the removal of the sleeping cabin situated the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor site is April thirty. And whereas there have been no negative complaints from the Portsmouth community regarding the current location, whereas the proposed alternate to this action may be temporary to to this action may be temporary motel lodgings at a considerable cost to taxpayers, therefore be resolved that City Council grant an extension at the current location of Sleeping Cabins and that staff be directed to consult with the community and report back to Council on May 17th with recommendations for an alternate location for the Sleeping Cabins. Councilor Neal, you have the floor.
Thank you very much and I want to thank my secondor and that this, what we were faced with originally was quite a dilemma because Council passed a motion saying this should end on the 30th of this month. And therefore it required a motion of Council to alter that instruction because staff follow the will and the wishes expressed by Council. So that's why I originally brought this forward and I want to thank the mayor because I was kind of struggling, starting at five in the morning, with the wording of of this motion. And I was initially going to do it in two motions, one a notice of motion for the third and one a motion. And the mayor, in his wisdom, said, why, why are you doing two motions? Why don't you just do one, which made a lot of sense by eight o'clock in the morning? That made sense. So so the wording of this is such that I think it gives staff an adequate time to work on a more permanent solution, but it doesn't force out those 10 people who are currently living in the in the Sleeping Cabins, which is definitely a positive. And it doesn't force the city to have to pay tens of thousands of dollars for motel rooms in order to accommodate them once we say they can no longer stay in the cabins. So hopefully this is a frugal and a sensible remedy to what was a kind of impending situation. So I want to thank the secondor, I want to thank the mayor and I want to thank all the people who came in delegation tonight. So, thank you.
I thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councilor Doherty.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I spoke with residents and representatives from Cork and everyone is supportive of an extension of May 17. I also spoke with staff and this extension will, and we heard from them tonight, it'll be helpful to to give them extra time to find an alternative solution. But I just want to clarify the wording of this motion and I just wonder if staff may, how staff interprets the two therefore clauses. Are we voting for an extension until May 17th? Because I'm not sure if that's clear, just in the wording of this motion.
See you, Hurdle.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So that that is my understanding, Councilor Dorothy, that this is a motion to extend until May 17 and at which time staff would bring more information back on some short term and longer term options.
So what happens with the cabins on May 17th?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Unless we have obviously a different direction from Council, we would be looking at removing the cabins. Now, we would obviously try to find an option or a solution where cabins could be relocated to, but as per my email earlier today to some members of Council, there may not be an option that would be ready, most likely not an option that would be ready on May 17 because we wouldn't actually spend dollars in preparing an option without Council's approval unless Council gave us that direction now. Otherwise, we wouldn't have surely the authority to do that.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So this pilot was a winter initiative to help 10 people get out of the cold and we had a really freezing cold winter. It was really, really necessary. It was an emergency. Imagine if we had an initiative like this in every district, we would be able to help 120 people get out of the cold every year. And this could be a real game changer for a challenge that we've experienced to try to solve for years now. The problem, of course, is what happens when a winter initiative like this, when we don't have permanent housing to transition people to, and that's what we're facing really tonight. I don't want to sit here and give people false hope because then we'll be there on May 17th with exactly the same challenge. So this is a difficult conversation for us to have. We have such a critical need for affordable housing. We have almost no support of housing. So what do we do now? From everything that I heard from staff tonight, an extension most definitely is worthwhile. I really encourage and urge the community as a whole and anybody who who may have property to come and help us as a city to solve this. The community has been incredibly supportive and when I say community, I mean the residents, the the men and the men that we saw today on the screen who who shared with us that being unhoused is actually a full-time job. This is really a sad and critical situation that we find ourselves in. So I just received the motion to this morning and I and I spoke with a lot of people in my community. Everybody is supportive. Everybody wants to find a solution for this, but what I really don't want to do tonight is create this false sense of security that on May 17th, we're going to have this magical solution. Staff have actually been trying to solve this since since the fall and if it was so simple, we wouldn't be having this conversation tonight. And again, I want to thank Crystal and everybody who's who's tried to make this a real success and it has been a success, but we have to make sure that the success continues. And what I hope staff will also do is try to come with a solution that might be a hybrid model, maybe, maybe the cabins go somewhere in this, in the summer and go, come back to Portsmouth in the winter because right now, the way the community feels, with all the respect that was given both ways and the learning that's taken place, I'm positive that the Portsmouth community will will be, welcome the cabins back in the winter. So we got to think a little bit ahead to next winter, will, where will those cabins be? So I really just feel like it's really important that we know what we're, what we're getting into and that May 17th, we may not have a long-term solution, but it'll, but hopefully we'll have something.
I thank you. Next is Councilor Hill.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was out there this morning to to meet with Crystal and and take a look around and and I actually echo what Councilor Oosterhoff said. I was one of the people who opposed it initially and I thought that the consultation hadn't been sufficiently undertaken at that time and and I thought there were some, you know, I think what I said at the time was that we do things very thoroughly and I didn't feel that we'd done that, our research on that as thoroughly as we could have. And I was really happy to see how successful this was and my congratulations go out to all the folks that did the work, Crystal in particular and her team, the neighbors were incredible and have been incredible and very supportive and the city staff that supported it as well. So I think on the whole, it's a huge success. My concern with the way that this motion is worded though, is that what we said we would do is that we would end this program on April the 30th. So I support fully the extension to May the 17th because I think, you know, there's some practical issues that have to be resolved. But if the result is that it gets extended, then we're not really being true to our word. And and I think that is critical as we look to other, you know, because this was successful, there is some potential, and I I think Crystal said it well today, that this is the kind of program that could exist in every part of the community. But it won't if people don't, don't feel that we're going to be good to our word. And if we say that the program is going to end on this date, then I think we have to make sure that we we stick to that and that if we have to extend it for good reasons, that we do it for as short a period as possible. My my concern is that on May 17th, those cabins will still be operational and we'll be debating sort of the next steps, which could take, you know, a month or more. And then we're really interfering with the other partners that use that facility and and I think maybe undermining our own, our own integrity a little bit because, you know, we we didn't really, we aren't necessarily going to do what we say we're going to do. So I I'm really, I I really support this till May 17th. I would not support a continuation in the in the current form beyond May 17th and I look forward to the report that that staff are going to bring back in terms of of options. Thank you.
I thank you. Next is Councilor Chappelle.
Thank you, Your Worship. One of the thoughts that I had was the idea of having these cabins removed might be counterproductive. Maybe what we could consider, and maybe you can respond to this, is leave the cabins, but have them not occupied over the summer because they're a winter, fall, early spring type initiative so that they are maintained there, but they're just not being utilized so it doesn't impact Cork or or the other utilization utilization of the marina during the summer. And then if they find someplace to move them to, then then pursue it, but just don't move them directly into storage and pay that extra cost. So I'm just wondering if some thoughts on that.
See you, Hurdle.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I may actually ask Commissioner Yugen Boss to also jump in because he's been more connected to the conversations with Cork. My understanding is that the issue with the space on site is that Cork is looking to be able to have access to the space where the cabins are currently located. So that's something that we would need to to definitely discuss with Cork to see if they could be relocated somewhere else on the site, I'm not sure. But in their current location, I do believe that that space that usually Cork would use, but I see that Commissioner Yugen Boss is ready to jump in.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Lanning, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So Cork, yes, definitely is someone that we have had a lot of discussions with over the past week and we we talked this afternoon. They do require access to that area and to prepare for their events. They are prepared, as Councilor Doherty indicated, to delay their their preparations for their their busy summer events until after May 17th, but they are under the impression that that area will be freed up. And also, we've been talking a lot with the Brigantene folks who have require access directly into that tunnel area, which is blocked off from the, from the, from the use of the cabins. And in order for them to access their tools and get to their boat water side, that is a, that is a critical pass through. So any, anything beyond this, this timeline would would continue to impact their efforts. They've made changes to how they operate for the winter and they will now need to continue to make changes through to the May 17th. They were, they were hoping for for the May 1st date. They're also, the public washrooms for the for the boaters at the marina are open typically 24 hours a day, starting May 1st, sometimes earlier than May 1st, but but wouldn't have been this year for sure. Those are in the tunnel, those are, those are blocked through this east passage. So those needing to access the, those washrooms and showers need to walk all the way around the building, which which is approximately a 500 meter round trip. So these are the type of logistical things that we can, we can do some short-term solutions with opening up access to the building for for longer hours as necessary, but getting safe and accessible access to the washrooms without having to walk all the way around in the middle of the night or something like that is is more difficult longer term. So that, those are the the impacts right now. So I think the partner groups that we've been talking to in the, in the, in the marina operations, we can, we can handle this through to May 17th, but going beyond that would, but again, seriously affect operations from several perspectives.
Okay, next is Councilor Strout.
Thanks, Your Worship. I think there's a few things on this. I I think I just could do a summary before I make a suggestion. So, so we, I think it's fair to say that everyone wants the success of this past winter to not just end suddenly and 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 not be something that we have access to in the future, should the need continue to arise, which it probably will. However, the April 30th date is there for a very good reason and we we just heard from Commissioner Yugen Boss what that looks like on the detail level. The reason is because in May, the, the seasonal use of the, of this busy marina starts up, starts up in May. So and Cork is one of the busiest events and most famous events that Kingston has. So it's like, it it's great that they're willing to wait a couple of weeks, but but that's, I think that's where we have our agreement. We all agreed that a couple more weeks, 17 days till May 17th is a very compassionate and reasonable suggestion to give another 17 days. We heard from the CAO that the way it was interpreted is that on May 17th, the cabins would have to be removed from their exact location, blocking the passageway and that kind of thing. So I guess I can ask a question here before I make my suggestion. So if we pass this motion as is, what happens on May 17th with the information that we have in front of us right now?
See you, Hurdle.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So my understanding would be that on May 18, we would be removing the cabins, Councilor Strout, because from a staff perspective, we do not have direction or authority from Council to go beyond that timeframe. So that would be on the May 18.
So essentially, this motion is interpreted as, as a, as sort of a retroactive amendment to the original motion to change the end date from April 30th to May 17th. If that's what it is, then I think, I think it's going to pass. But that doesn't get us to any further on the conversation of what happens with a seasonal solution, which was to get people out of the cold, when the season ends and what happens when you know there's another winter coming. So that's where Councilor Chappelle mentioned, maybe we should keep the cabins nearby, save cost on transport. I think if we can find a storage space on site that doesn't interfere with Cork, for the, for the empty cabins, you could, you could stick them all together in one spot, maybe even in the parking lot or something. The, then then your cost is just moving the cabins, deploying them for the winter, taking them out again. Then we've got, then we're looking forward a few months. I I think up until now, we, it's, it looks like we're, we're, we're treating it like an emergency when this is actually, people have been living on the streets since before I was born, since before our grandparents were born, right? It's not a new problem. So if we don't start talking about permanent solutions, we're, we're going to have this conversation a lot. We, I don't even have time to get into the, you know, the tie-ins with the provincial and the the funding. I mean, this, I'm just going to say this. If you do the math on how much this program cost, it's very understandable that it was successful because it was quite expensive for 10 shelter beds, essentially. It was, it was more expensive than any other program that we do, per person, right? But that's because it's an emergency and that's because it's the winter and it's because it's all we had. But that's got to be part of the conversation. What are we going to be spending on an annual basis for this and where's the money coming from? And can we scale it so that we can help more than 10 people? Because doing this for 10 people is, you know, there was probably a lot more than 10 people involved in helping them. I mean, it's a lot of manpower and it's a lot of money to help only 10 people. We need to help more people. So I guess my suggestion is to put your thinking caps on and come back with it, with new motions that turn this into a permanent solution because on May 17th, it'll basically be mothballed for the time being.
30 seconds. Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to new motion number one? Councilor Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This partly follows on what Councilor Strout was talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This party follows on what Counsel Strout was talking about and what I'm concerned about. We're concerned, well, two things here. The immediate, what immediately happens, in other words, on the May eighteenth. And we're concerned about what happens after the immediate, which is sort of still immediate. And Counsel Strout put that very well, as did Counsel Doherty. And so I was just going to add to that because we have reportedly between, that we can account for about a hundred and eighty-five to two hundred and ten homeless people. This dealt with ten and it was expensive, right? Not that that's an argument against doing anything, but it reminds you that we have to have resources. And so the ten addresses part of the, that element of the homeless people. And it is something we can do. For a long time, the last couple of years, we've been thinking about not just this, but other things. What can we actually do? So it seems to me, I just wanted to point to the after thing, after the seventeenth. One thing is, and then further down the line, as Counsel Doherty suggested, I think we need land banking because we have to put people someplace. So that's one problem. The other problem is common facilities, which is very expensive. So, um, but if that's what you need to actually do something about the problem and we put hundreds of thousands of dollars into the downtown to try to deal with the homeless situation down there and the begging and so on. It's not pleasant to talk about, but it's a reality and we all voted for it, I think. And, um, so, but that's not, personally, I don't think that's going to solve the problem. We've had outreach workers and we've done things before. We need a systematic, connected strategy. And we're going to have to put the resources into it. Otherwise we're just kidding ourselves. Okay? And we, so I just wanted to remind us of that. I, I'm going to vote for this obviously because it's, you know, is there another humane way of doing this? So, but I want, remind us that we need that strategy. And I have a question that was brought to me by someone. They said, why can't the people go into this, these ten anyway, go into Lake Ontario Park? And I tried to suggest some reasons, but, uh, I don't know the answer. So I'm going to ask staff. The reason is there's our hookups there and there are water there, at least there was a few years ago. And, um, there are reportedly showers. I was a little iffy about that. So if staff could answer that question, why can't it go, for the time being, into Lake Ontario Park?
C O Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So it is one of the option, uh, Counsel Hutchison, that we have been looking into. Um, and it will be identified for council. Should council wish to select this particular option. I do want to flag for council though, that by going to Lake Ontario Park, it does change the program and the services that are being offered. And the reason for that, and you've heard it today, is that people feel there's a sense of community. They have access to a kitchen. They have access to laundry. They have access to gathering space, um, where it, it feels like their own common space. Lake Ontario Park would provide showers and washrooms, no question about that. But that's where it, the amenities, uh, actually stop. So if it is something that council felt was absolutely critical and necessary, we could definitely make some arrangements for that, but I do want council to understand that it would change the nature of the service. But we would, um, we will include this one as an option and we will be looking at other options that would provide more amenities.
That, that's, you know, that's what I've learned. The, um, and I thank you for the answer. It struck me though, there's a, there might be a solution to this and it, it may not be. But why could we not have a field kitchen in a tent? I mean, I'm looking at Counsel Bone there. The, because he's been in the military and this is possible. It's possibly really expensive and it would only work in the summer as far as I know. Um, although people live in yurts in very cold temperatures. But I, I'm just looking, I'm just trying to offer that as an idea. And we could ask, we got a military base. We could ask them what the problems and issues might be with that. So I'm just going to leave that.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So we will definitely, as part of those options, identify any, um, situations where we would have to rent and identify those costs for council. And if council feels that the rental cost is, is worth, um, the investment, that's something that, uh, council can definitely direct. So there are things like, um, you know, the, um, portable kitchen that can be rented. We do have cost estimates for those. Um, there are some other things that can be rented, but there, there are going to be some limits as well. For example, meeting space. I, I'm not sure how we can actually provide that on that site. Um, we wouldn't be able to rent something for that. So there would be definitely some changes and there would be some, um, associated costs. But those will be part of, that information will be part of the options we bring back.
You have one minute on the clock.
Okay. So quickly, we just voted a lot of money, okay? To put the Confederation Basin Extension in. I voted for it. I have to admit, my first thought was how many of my constituents are actually going down into that neighborhood? And I don't have a lot of faith. Some will, but I don't have a lot of them will. So we, we, we spent that money today. It's going to happen. And I think in fifty years, nobody will be, or even in ten, no one is going to be asking, why did you do that? Okay? It's good for business tourism, but it's good for this, us as well. So the point is, I want to take the attitude that we can solve this problem. That's what I'm looking for, from my colleagues. We can solve this problem. It's not going to be easy and it's not going to be inexpensive, but it can, we do, we can do a lot more to, you have to narrow the homeless population down by little onion sleeve, you know, pieces of onion. And that's the only way you do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There's nobody else? Counsel Neil? Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Kylie, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you. I was just hoping staff could comment on if we pass this. Um, when the report comes back, could we have a bit of information on the cost more than that's in the current report? Uh, particularly, I'm wondering, comparing it to other options? Just to get a, I guess, a per capita kind of head count compared to a shelter or whatever the other potential solutions are, so we can see that in comparison.
Ms. Nortgraf?
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson. Um, absolutely. We can actually provide a bit of an overview. The costs have definitely changed pre, uh, pre-pandemic and currently. Um, but definitely happy to provide an overview of kind of the costs, average cost per, per night or per month or per person. Uh, definitely seeing a lot of kind of different services that, that might have different costs attached to it. But we can put some, uh, some, uh, information in the reports.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Neil, you have the last word.
Thank you very much. Um, a couple of comments regarding some of the comments made. Uh, I, I made this same mistake, uh, this morning. Uh, when I referred to the cost of the cab, of the sleeping cabins, the city was engaged in that. I believe it was a case of, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, of donations that had been raised by the community that paid for the bulk of those, if not all of those ten cabins. Is that accurate?
C O Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So that's correct. Uh, Counsel Neil, that, uh, with United Way donation paid for the majority of the costs of the actual cabins themselves.
And I appreciate that, that the city, the operating costs have been primarily borne by the city. Is that accurate as well?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, the, um, the operating cost, a portion, uh, of it has definitely been covered, uh, through by the city. Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, so the, those high capital costs for those ten cabins were actually raised by donations by citizens of Kingston. And we're forever saying, why, and I'm looking at Counsel Chappelle when I say this, why don't we ask for donations from citizens? Well, this is a, a program that received those donations successfully. The other thing I'm a little concerned about, first of all, my five AM motion came about because of a, a sense of crisis management because we really were faced with a crisis situation. If, if we just had nothing happening at tonight's council meeting on the thirtieth, by council decree, and we would have all been held responsible for it, those ten cabins would have been vacated. And as pointed out, uh, by Crystal earlier, these are people that are less likely to find solace in the integrated care hub or in, in, uh, in shelters. So what would, where would they end up? They'd end up living in the rough. Now, camping in the summer, I enjoy doing it. So I don't think that that would be as great an issue, but it wouldn't take us any closer to a permanent solution. And in fact, when you, when you think about it, living in the rough still means that city-funded outreach workers would be responsible for locating them in the woods and making sure they were safe and secure. Cause that's the job of a community, uh, social services. So this seventeen-day extension would, is, is an opportunity to give our staff, our variable staff, a month to try to come up with a more permanent solution. I, I appreciate what our C A O says. It's not going to be an easy fix. But it, it's better having a month than having a week to try and resolve this. I also want to ask staff if I can, uh, it's my understanding that if, if they were moved out of those ten, uh, sleeping cabins at this time, that the city was proposing to try to find the motel rooms. Is that accurate?
C O Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, Counsel Neil, we had already identified a potential location for motel rooms. Now it may not be the best suited and we were definitely looking at some other alternative options for motels.
I'm sorry. How much would that cost taxpayers? Uh, if we were looking at from the first to the seventeenth, uh, for instance, which is what this motion is trying to avoid. But how much would that cost Kingston taxpayers?
That, that might be a difficult question for staff to calculate on the spot, Counsel Neil. I'm wondering if you could get a ballpark.
I would accept a rough estimate even for ten, ten motel rooms for seventeen days.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Patterson. Um, so again, a rough estimate would be that it's approx, again, depending on which hotel and location, et cetera, that it probably would be fifteen to, uh, twenty thousand dollars. I, I do want to remind council that we are not, um, that we do have, um, an ongoing overflow hotel option. And we still, for instance, are supporting self-isolation beds through hotels and have, because of the limited capacity in the shelters, uh, more hotel options. So we are not, we are quite familiar with hotel options, but it certainly is, um, is a, um, there is a cost that comes with that.
Thank you. I guess I'm troubled by the idea that the community has spent, I think a quarter of a million dollars in donations to create, to create ten sleeping cabins. And the city, in our wisdom, is going to take those ten, put them in storage so they can't even be used for the purpose that ci- citizens of Kingston raised money to allow them to be used. And that's why I'm looking forward to, uh, almost a month for staff to find a way that those, uh, those donated, uh, sleeping cabins can be used by the, for the, what people raised money to use them for. And if, if we put them in storage.
You're at five, five minutes, Counsel Neil. Did you hear my thirty-second warning?
No, I missed it.
Okay. I gave you thirty-second warning.
Time does fly. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so we'll call the vote on new motion number one. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay. We have no other new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Okay. Uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, ask for a minute, please.
Moved by Counsel Doherty, seconded by Counsel Neil, that the minutes of City Council Meeting Number Nine dash twenty twenty-two, held Tuesday, April first, twenty twenty-two, be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counsel Hill, seconded by Counsel Kylie, that bylaws one through six be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counsel Hill, seconded by Counsel Kylie, that clause twelve point six three of bylaw number twenty twenty-one dash forty-one be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws one through three, three readings.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counsel Hill, seconded by Counsel Kylie, that bylaws one through six be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel Doherty. All those in favor? Opposed? And we're adjourned. Thank you very much.